All right, good evening, everyone. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours in advance of the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. At this time, I'd like to ask our superintendent to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that's one that's at the bottom, okay. Right. Thank you, everyone. All right, the next item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda, and so the agenda was posted in advance. I would move to approve our agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. All right, I should recognize that we recognize a quorum of our board with six members present and excellent with Kurt absent, excused absent, so thank you for that. All right. So, next is public participation, and so, let's see here, let me grab my notes. Before I begin, at our last meeting, we had an individual who addressed the board during public participation who was technically not eligible, and when I say eligible, our board policy requires that you be a resident of the district, an employee of the district, or parent or guardian of a student who is enrolled in the district. And I believe this was totally inadvertent, but just wanted to pause to remind our group before we begin public participation that if you wish to address the board, you need to be one of those, resident of the district, employee of the district, or parent guardian of a student that's enrolled in the district. So, I have the comment cards in front of me, I haven't counted them, so give me a moment, I'll just count them up. There are 24 comment cards, so thank you for those who've enrolled, and on these comment cards, each individual provides their name, their address, and their relationship to the district. So what I'll do is, when you come forward to the podium, I'll just have you confirm your relationship to the district, so that we don't have that misunderstanding. So, with that, and based on the number of participant comment cards, we normally give each individual up to three minutes. Board policy says that we have set aside 30 minutes for this, but I would ask the board if we are interested in extending that public comment period to allow all these folks to speak.
I would be in favor of extending the period of time.
Second.
All right, is that a motion?
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
I move to extend the period of public participation for tonight's meeting.
Great, thank you. Toni?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second to extend the time for public participation. Any final discussion?
If I could just add, I am all in favor of everyone speaking, that's not it, but I would ask the audience, and I'm sure you will as well, Mr. Zweigert, to be respectful of other people that are speaking, to not interrupt, and please don't heckle anyone, including board members.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that comment, we want to treat all our participants fairly. With that, a motion and a second to extend public participation. I'll call the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, the motion carries. So what I will do is I'll invite individuals forward, I'll indicate who's invited forward, and then I'll say who's on deck, so that you can prepare yourself and come forward. Everyone's given three minutes to speak, and so, we have a timer right there that counts down, and I believe it gives a tone when it reaches the end of three minutes, and so, thank you, one more. So we'd ask that, there you go, so we'd ask that you respect that, and when ultimately that three minutes is reached, if you could very quickly conclude your thought. And again, we do this out of fairness. All right, that being said, I invite forward Jenny Thompson, and on deck, we have Cheryl Smith. Jenny, please come forward to the podium here on my right, thank you very much. And Jenny, I'd just ask, you indicated that you are a parent and a resident of the district, is that correct?
I am.
Excellent, great.
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Wonderful, all right. Please, please, go ahead.
Thank you. It might surprise a lot of you to hear what I'm about to say. I am not opposed to children learning how to deal with social and emotional issues. I am against Castle and Second Step, companies that have an agenda, companies that feel it's their job to teach our children beliefs and values that we don't agree with. I've met with all of you individually this week and walked you through what we believe and why we believe it. I think it's great to teach kids how to overcome roadblocks, how to stop bullies, and how to talk about emotions, among other lessons. But the issue we have with these lessons are where Castle and Second Step put in their two cents. Removing those two companies would get rid of the problems completely. On the surface, the lessons are worthwhile, when you dig into the lessons, that's where you see the agenda, and it's the agenda that does not line up with our beliefs and values. So while we want Second Step removed completely, the number one question you all ask me is, well, then what? There's many options. We can create our own, we can do what other districts do, we can get rid of it in the middle school and high school, keep it in the elementary school, these are all options, and they all will take work. But remember why we're here today. Second Step was purchased in 2020, undoubtedly the worst year ever. Over 1,300 students in the district were at home learning, parents were overwhelmed with admentum. No one in the district was given a chance to see what Second Step was, they just got implemented. And I wish this conversation could have happened then, before it was already in the schools, but we were not given that chance. A lot of people say to us, just opt your kids out. So, being someone that would like it to stay in the curriculum, but just not being taught by those companies, so now my kid doesn't get to learn soft skills because they want, that we don't want them to be indoctrinated in learning about anti-family views. To make sure all children get to learn these skills, we need to remove Castle and Second Step, and then let parents choose if they want their child in a non-biased, social-emotional learning class or not. While meeting with district employees, I've learned that the West Bend School District wants to teach the whole child, and that's very commendable, and a wonderful thing to want to take on considering all that West Bend teachers already do. But for this to happen, we need to compromise. We need to become what some of you have discussed while running for school board, a community that works together and is looked up to by surrounding cities. We stopped, we need to stop fighting conservatives against liberals, neighbors against neighbors, and in some cases, family members against family members. We've become a school district known for putting aside our differences and supporting our children mentally, emotionally, and intellectually. Could you imagine what could happen if we put all that passion and energy we have for all of our children and put it into a curriculum that makes both sides feel heard and where all children benefit? I think we're capable of this in West Bend, and I ask the board to give us a chance to prove it.
Thank you, Jenny. Our next speaker is Cheryl Smith, and on deck is Cameron Merkel. All right, and Cheryl, if you could just confirm, it says you're a resident, a parent of two graduates, and taught in the district for 27 years, is that correct?
That's correct.
Great, please proceed.
Today's Columbus Day. I learned in school that this day commemorates the beginning of European colonization of the Americas, which eventually led to the founding of the United States. Recently, some states have instituted Indigenous Peoples' Day in place of Columbus Day to honor the cultures, history, and resilience of the Native American peoples who had lived here for thousands of years before Columbus discovered them. But for many Native Americans, Columbus's arrival marks the beginning of attempts by European settlers to destroy Native cultures and languages, to drive Native Americans from their lands and claim that land for themselves. Which of these stories should be taught in the classroom? They're all true. Will that last story make some students uncomfortable and feel guilty perhaps? Possibly. But no one alive today is personally responsible for those actions in the past. Those past actions, why not consider if there are things we can do now which could help make the lives of Native Americans better? Having these conversations in an age-appropriate way is part of a real education, not indoctrination. Similarly, how can history and social studies teachers not mention race when they teach U.S. history? A history that includes enslaved Black people, a civil war that was fought over the right to own another person, usually Black, attempts to limit Black folks from voting, from getting an education, and from holding lucrative jobs? All of these stories serve as a background to the racial unrest that pops up in our news feeds every day. Some people don't want these stories told, they have formed groups to scour lesson plans, assignments, and tests, looking for things they don't want to have mentioned in the classroom. In some places, they've even advocated that teachers wear body cameras so that they can be monitored. They call this transparency. But, I taught German for 27 years, similar tactics were used in Nazi Germany and later in communist East Germany. Neighbors informed on neighbors, colleagues informed on colleagues, to instill fear and keep people in line. This should not happen in the United States. Our teachers should not have to fear losing their jobs if they mention or discuss race in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Next, we invite Cameron Merkel to the podium, and on deck is Rudy Vorwijk. And Cameron, it says here you are a resident of the district, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Great, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening. First and foremost, I would like to thank you for letting us speak here tonight. I'm Cameron Merkel, I am a resident in West Bend, and my address has been provided. I'm a junior here at West Bend West. Now, I know the focus is mainly on SEL tonight, but I came here to talk about a few other topics as well. The first one being masks. I personally think better without masks, and I think many others, including some of the audience, would agree with me. Now, I'm just asking for them to remain optional. I know that they are still currently optional, which I have to thank you for. But when masks became optional at the end of May, I walked into my first hour class and everyone seemed to be even happier than before. I saw nothing but smiling, excited people finally being able to see each other's faces. Please tell me, does that mean something to you? However, I understand some people want to wear masks, which is their choice, but everyone should get to choose whether or not they want to wear a mask, even if the positive cases rise. Now, switching the topic, I would like to bring up the protests we had on September 10th. I understand you can legally have protests in school, but they have to be peaceful. They were not peaceful. My friend walked past these so-called peaceful protesters, and they yelled at them, stating, "Shout Black Lives Matter," or, "You're white supremacists." Do you know how ridiculous that sounds? On Tuesday, the 23rd, the most recent event, there was more commotion in the cafeteria during the second hour of lunch. I witnessed someone screaming in another student's face because they felt they had been mocked. Mind you, I'm just trying to eat my lunch, but instead, I'm worried about food being thrown through the air, just like it did on the 10th of September. I have to say, the staff has been trying to do their best, but it is not enough. Even when I work at my job, I'm allotted a 30-minute peaceful lunch break. I would expect no difference from the peaceful time allotted at work than the time allotted at school. With that being said, I'm hopeful that this administration cleans up this problem. Is that so hard to ask for? This brings me to my last topic, social and emotional learning. I believe that Castle and Second Step curriculum will only make these matters worse. For example, in the eighth grade curriculum, lesson 13 is called Stand Up For Change. In the activity in this lesson, the teacher asks the students to create a poster to stand up for change. In my opinion, this sounds like teaching children to be activists. I also believe that every student should have an unbiased education. That way, they can form their own opinion and not be indoctrinated by Marxist curriculum. I would like to bring one last thing to everyone's attention. On September 13th, at the school board meeting, once everyone was done speaking, Superintendent Wimmer stated, "Myself and several staff members are just leaning into the feedback you're providing. When I hear the words 'leaning into,' I think you are slowly listening to us. Shouldn't this be something to worry about?" Personally, I think that biased education should be something to fear, and I think others would agree. I would just like to let you know that I hope you listen to what everyone has to say tonight, and I hope that what I have stated will be insightful. Thank you for your time.
All right, we now invite Rudy Vorwijk to the podium, and on deck is Stephanie DeAngelis. And Rudy, it says here you are a parent, is that correct?
Yes, I had three children graduate from East.
Fantastic, great, just one moment. Toni, did you?
Well, we were having a hard time sharing, but I'm going to use the audio.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, the audio is good.
Yeah, I'm a resident, and I had three students, three children graduate from East.
Great, please proceed.
Well, I'm kind of doing this impromptu because I just don't understand, how do you fight racism? By teaching racism. We talk about civil war and stuff like that, nobody ever talks about hundreds of thousands of people that died freeing the slaves? Can we talk about all of that? Do we have to have a Black History Month? Why aren't we teaching this throughout the year? Why did I have to see a movie about hidden figures? I never knew that. I'm a history buff, I never heard of this stuff before. Why aren't we talking about all of this stuff, Black, White, Asian, throughout the year? You know, we used to be number one on planet Earth in education, now, where are we? We've got a school in Milwaukee that's 0% in math and reading, and they get almost twice as much as we do. This school, I've seen two numbers, they're 38% and 42 or 3% in reading. Really? And we're talking about this kind of stuff? Where's basic fundamentals? What makes a winning sports team? Basic fundamentals? What's a success in life? Are we teaching basic fundamentals? No. What happened to this bullying thing that was gonna go on, and Dr. Phil was gonna come and talk to everybody? It's only gotten worse. Why? I just don't understand the logic of what we're teaching our children anymore. Boy, they got out there and they know all this, and they know Joe Camel, but they can't read. Really? I have Black friends, they're wonderful people, but you know what they have in common? They're educated, they're kind, and they're not racist anymore than most of us are. And you know, school boards used to be local, right? Then the federal government stepped in, and where have we gone since then? We used to be number one on planet Earth, Wisconsin and Iowa was going back and forth for one and two in America, weren't we? Where are we now? We're like 28th in the world in reading and math and stuff like, whatever it all is. This isn't right. Where's the basic fundamentals of America anymore? You can't go in there and start telling little kids, "You're an oppressor." I asked a friend of mine, his dad is Black, his mom is White, I said, "Are you oppressing yourself?" He didn't know what to say, of course, it was funny. Come on, people, let's wake up. We're all human beings, let's teach, how about some George H.W., a kinder, gentler nation? Thank you.
All right. We welcome Stephanie DeAngelis to the podium, and on deck is Kate McCall. And Stephanie, it says here you are a parent of a student in the district, is that correct?
Parent and resident, yeah.
Parent and resident, great, thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening. I am the parent of a child who is in seventh grade at Badger Middle School, and I am here tonight to discuss my concerns with having SEL taught in the West Bend School District. My husband and I had discussed SEL with our son prior to school starting and the kinds of things he was going to be faced with when it came to the school year this year. We thought we had a pretty good handle on making sure he knew what was appropriate and what wasn't. During the second or third week of school, I had asked my son what he was being taught when it came to SEL. And when he told me that his teacher asked the class if the students would rather brush their teeth with toilet bowl water or drop their phone in a porta potty, I was somewhat in shock and appalled that this is something that a teacher would even ask a seventh graders alone. Let alone think that this is, what is this teaching them that is worthy? I was more so taken back that this is how the teachers are using their time to teach my son. I thought I was sending him to school to learn science, social studies, math, reading, and writing, and come to find out, this is not how the time is being used. I was even more taken back that my son thought this was funny. After a long talk and explaining what he is supposed to be taught in school and how his time should be spent there, he completely understood. I then asked him if there were classes like Home Economics, where he can learn the basic life skills of cooking, sewing, and maybe some work ethic courses that were offered, or woodshop, where they can learn to use their hands to make something from scratch or follow a blueprint per se. His response was, "No." I explained to him that these are the types of classes that will teach him life skills and help him get ready for the world after high school, and teach him how to provide for himself on his own. SEL is not teaching children true life skills and how to function in the outside world. Instead, it is teaching them to be someone that perhaps maybe they are not. It is the parent's job to teach their children how to handle their emotions and their behavior, not the job of a school system. Changing schools is not an option for my son, nor should I feel that it is something that is my only option. I should be able to rely on the school district that I live in and pay taxes in to give my child the best education they can provide. It would be very beneficial to teach these children how to function in the workforce as most of them are approaching that age where they will soon be able to get a job. Also, teach these kids the value of a dollar and how to balance a checkbook. These are basic life skills that most of these children come out of school not knowing how to do. Every student should be taught equally regardless of race or gender, and every student should have the same opportunity as the other, not singling one or the other out. It's time we get back to teaching the basics in schools. I am suggesting to you as a school board to make Home Economics classes, woodshops, and building for career success classes an option for those students and parents who do not want to be involved in SEL but still be taught valuable life skills. My question to you as a school board is why do you think that teaching SEL is more important than teaching children true life skills that will carry them through the duration of their life and prepare them for life after school? Thank you for giving me the opportunity for you to listen to a concerned parent.
All right, we welcome Kate McCall to the podium, and on deck is Mary Wiegand. And Kate, it says here you are a resident and a parent.
That is correct.
Great, thank you, please proceed.
I have a kindergarten this year at McLean University, or McLean School Elementary. And as her parent, I only want what's best for my child. I want her to be happy and healthy, I want her to have friends and do well in school. Above all, I want her to be a good human. I want her to be kind and empathetic and inclusive. I also want her to succeed in life. I want her to have problem-solving and critical thinking skills. I don't want her to be hindered by bullying or harassment, instead, I want her to be able to recognize bullying and know how to handle it. These are skills that will not only help her in school, but also in her adult life. All these things, these are concepts and skills that are taught in our social-emotional learning curriculum. Upon first learning about the SEL curriculum in our district, I was excited that we are being proactive in our approach to give students these tools to help them succeed in life, both in and out of school. The more I have read and looked at what the curriculum entails, the more I am excited for this to be taught to my daughter and the other students in the district. This is a step in the right direction for addressing the mental health of kids and helping them become successful in their futures. It is my sincere hope that the school board votes to reinstate the SEL curriculum to the benefit of all students in the district, and most specifically, my daughter. I am excited that the lessons we teach at home about being a good person and being kind are being echoed at school, where she spends many hours each day, in a thoughtful and educated way. Please reinstate the SEL curriculum. I hope our students' education is not determined by a loud minority in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we welcome Mary Wiegand to the podium, and on deck is Ann Mullenau. And Mary, if you can just confirm that you are a resident of the district?
Yes, I think I wrote "funder" and "member."
You did write "funder" and "member." All right.
Okay.
Thank you, please proceed.
Okay, first of all, my opinion, parents, get your kids out of these government schools. I will proceed. I am reading this for a mother in the district who has, I believe, two children, Corinne Friend. I am here today in opposition to Castle Second Step SEL program that was purchased by the West Bend School District on 6/15/2020. I ask for the program's removal from our school district. I have spoken at great lengths regarding the lessons, the anti-family undertone, pornographic references, and being used as the first step of indoctrination into critical race theory. We have submitted seven pages of flagged issues within the Second Step SEL curriculum. We have presented facts received from FOIA requests to the district, direct text from SEL lessons, Second Step and Castle's website. We know what SEL is, and we want it gone. The 2018 to 21 district provided 41 seminars on professional development on SEL with training topics such as implicit bias, racial injustice issues, critical conscience leadership, and diversity, equity, inclusion. So I guess that's why we can't teach kids how to read, that's my interjection, because the teachers are all going to seminars on social and emotional learning. Back to my letter, all these seminar topics are theories of critical race theory, but was framed as SEL training. Coincidence? I and others against SEL have provided the school district copies of all known school district documents regarding SEL, along with the receipts. Those receipts show that the Wisconsin Department of Justice under Tony Evers gave a grant to the district in the amount of $257,000. These funds were used to purchase Castle Second Step SEL program. I took the time to research the grant. The grant states, under eligible expenses, "Funding may be used for expenses relating to providing direct access to school-based mental health services or external mental health providers for students. These expenses may include contractual expenses for external mental health providers, cost of transportation of students to mental health services, equipment and infrastructure to support in-school, televis, virtual mental health appointments, and hiring school-employed mental health providers." I just read exactly what the $257,000 were for, mental health professionals for our children, not SEL. It was meant to stop school shootings, in-school fighting, prevent suicide, other mental health issues. I understand the importance of true social and emotional skills, kids need to learn how to make healthy choices, these lessons should be taught at home or with parental permission under the supervision of a licensed health provider. I ask you to remove SEL and replace that time with programs that will...
Thank you, Mary. Next, we welcome Ann Mullenau to the podium, and Diana Siriax is on deck. Ann, it says you are a parent and a resident, can you confirm that?
Yes, I am.
Excellent, please proceed.
I support maintaining the SEL curriculum in the schools. I am a parent of two young teenage girls in the West Bend School District. I know they have benefited from the SEL curriculum. My daughters were in virtual school last year. Having SEL as part of the curriculum this year is an important part of their reintegration into in-person learning. And they are just two of some 1,000 students returning to fully in-person learning this year. I think we can all agree that our students today are facing far more societal pressures and challenges than many of us faced when we were in school. To think that all discussions on these topics should only take place at the home, or church, or with a therapist is naive and irresponsible. For some students, school is their only safe place, and teachers, their only safe adults. I hope that the school board continues to listen to curriculum experts, specifically teachers and district administrators, rather than a small community group who have just recently decided that SEL is no longer appropriate for their children. If these parents do not want their students to participate in SEL, I believe that they have and have always had the freedom to opt their students out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, and we welcome Diana Siriax to the podium, and Rich, I'm not sure if it's Rich or Rick, so I apologize, Rich Smith would be on deck. And so, Diana, it says you are a resident of the district, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you, please proceed.
I'm here to read a statement for a resident and an employee of the West Bend School District who could not be here tonight and wishes to remain anonymous. Dear School Board Members and Superintendent Wimmer, I am a freedom-loving conservative that works for the West Bend School District. I have three grandchildren attending this district. I do not want a curriculum taught to my grandchildren that has Marxist roots. There are plenty of other conservatives that work for this school district that feel the same. Unfortunately, conservative staff do not feel comfortable divulging that information because of the behavior and the untruths that are put out by the opposition. because of the behavior and the untruths that are put out by the opposition. Save America, which is a conservative group, has been labeled by some as a local extremist group and also a hate group. Please let me tell you what Save America is not. It is not an extremist group or a hate group. It's a group of conservative, concerned parents, grandparents, and citizens of Washington County who have researched and found evidence of Marxist ideology in the SEL learning curriculum, a curriculum parents cannot even view on their own. This issue with the SEL curriculum isn't about us, it's about our children and their future. I've worked for this school district for over 20 years, and I've seen a change in the behavior of the students over the years and their attitudes. This concerns me as an employee, as a parent, and as a grandparent. After the events at the high school that took place the second week of school, I am also concerned for our students and our staff. I attribute this change to the indoctrination of our young people with the ideology taught in this curriculum and others across our country. You, the school board, were elected by the people to govern in the best interest of our children. Parents, grandparents, and taxpayers are the people, and they're here telling you that they don't want this curriculum taught in their school district. Please find another curriculum or write one yourself, a curriculum that parents agree with and that can be viewed without having to make an appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we welcome, is it Rich Smith?
Yeah, Rich is right.
Excellent, thank you, sorry about that before.
No, it's okay.
Welcome to the podium, Mr. Smith, and on deck is Chris Bossert. And Rich, it says you are a resident of the district, is that correct?
I am.
Great, please proceed.
So first off, thank you guys for serving on the board. I am asking you to stand firmly behind the teachers and administrators in our schools and the programs that are presently being taught, including SEL. I believe that West Bend is blessed with wonderful teachers and administrators who have excellent attitudes and values and need our support and encouragement. I retired from full-time teaching in West Bend in 2011. I started teaching in 1971. I enjoyed working with young people in the classroom and in sports, and have met a lot of wonderful people here over the years, many of whom have become personal, lifetime friends. I even advised the student government for a few years and still continue to be an assistant coach in track and field for the East High School Boys Track Team. But today, I'm really here for the young people of West Bend. Sunday was World Mental Health Day. For the past six years, I have volunteered to teach in two programs offered by the National Alliance on Mental Illness, ending the Silence and Family-to-Family. I've made presentations about mental health and suicide prevention in every high school in Washington County, many middle schools, both public and private, and even the county jail. I have also spoken to veterans who have encouraged me to talk to young people about PTSD, and I'm always saddened when both girls and boys who have been socially and emotionally abused by others and will come up to me after the presentation and tell me about their experiences in tears. And when I read about teen suicides or violence that is done in high schools by teens to others, I am convinced that we have to do as much as we can in our schools today, now, to encourage kids to reach out when they need help for themselves and to empower them not to be afraid to help others in need. Isn't that what America is all about? So that's why I support the program. It may not be perfect, but it's a start, and it's better than doing nothing. When I first started teaching, there was no behavioral guidelines that were given to students. I wonder what behavioral guidelines are given today. I'm especially concerned with bullying and what I've seen happen with both boys and girls. And I know they used to be given folders. Unfortunately, I didn't start, I've been going through my basement cleaning out stuff, you know how it is, and I found these folders that I'd actually kept that was smart of me, but I only started in 1988. And here you can see it's kind of a list of all the guidelines, okay, and there's nothing on the back. Well, 10 years later, all of the things, the print is smaller, there's more rules, and they didn't have enough room, so they had to put them on the back.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. All right. We welcome Chris Bossert to the podium, and on deck is Jody Allen. And Chris, you listed under relationship to district elected representatives, so I'm assuming you're a resident of the district?
Yes, I am.
Fantastic, thank you, please proceed.
All right, I want to thank everybody tonight for, first of all, for your service. I know on controversial issues, when the general public wants to exercise their First Amendment right to petition the government for rejustive grievances, sometimes it's hard to be an elected leader and hear the feedback, so thank you for that. I also want to thank you for a month ago pausing SEL. I think that was the right decision with the questions that are in there about what SEL is and what it's teaching our kids. I'm going to encourage you tonight to vote to end Castle, which is, if I understand right, the SEL version for our middle school youth. So I'm going to encourage you to vote to end that and not continue that for our middle school. I also want to thank you for your efforts to improve curriculum transparency. So a few weeks ago, I was there on a Saturday morning where we got to look at the middle school SEL program. It was a good opportunity to get an introduction to what this material was, and it was greatly appreciated. One of the things I walked away with is that simply is not enough time to really take a deep dive into this material and what it's teaching our kids. I know the curriculum committee met, I believe, last week and is further advancing opportunities for parents to be able to view the SEL curriculum from at home so they can take that deeper dive and do it at a time that's convenient for them. So I want to thank you for doing that as well. I think everything we work to do to improve curriculum transparency so parents in the community know what youth are being taught, that's a big improvement. I think the standard going forward needs to be that parents in the community will always have full access to the curriculum at their own convenience, not having to schedule a time at the school for all aspects of the curriculum, whether that's the in-class presentation, any handouts, all the learning activities, everything needs to be transparent. And that may mean that every contract with every curriculum developer needs to have a clause in there specifically about curriculum transparency so everybody can see what's in the curriculum. LoveIsRespect.org is buried subtly into the SEL curriculum. When you go to that website, the first thing it does is put up a pop-up teaching kids how to hide their web history. Now, in contrast to that, I've been in regular contact with groups that work to combat human trafficking, sex exploitation, drug abuse, and those groups all know that our youth are most vulnerable and that parents need to be watching their internet activity in order to help prevent those issues. So those things are working against each other, so--
Thank you, thank you for your comments. All right, we welcome Jody Allen to the podium, and Carol Hager is on deck. And Jody, it says you are a taxpayer, so I'm assuming you're--
I'm a resident, a former parent, and a former employee of the district.
Very good, thank you, please, please proceed.
First of all, I would like to thank Paul personally for being honest and saying that you took the curriculum class that the teachers did on SEL. I thought that was very brave of you, considering the opposition to the program, so thank you on behalf of one citizen. I'd also like to say that we moved here in 1999 when my daughter was a sophomore in high school. My daughter is Korean by ethnicity, she's a Korean-American. When she came to this, into West Bend, she attended East High School, and she had three years of misogynistic and racial bullying through the school district. At that time, the school district's attitude or solution to the problem was to, number one, tell her, told her to ignore the students, she was a strong young woman, ignore the students. When it got worse, they told her, you know, in good athletic terms, suck it up. And finally, after an altercation, a physical altercation in a gym class, she was told that she was the problem, that she needed to just not be in a position where she could be bullied. I don't understand, at that time, I didn't understand how a student could not be in a position when it was in a classroom or being bullied in a hallway, when you, you know, these are not situations that you can avoid in school. And so at that time, they didn't do a very good job of handling things. And I was really impressed with what I read with the SEL program. I looked at the curriculum, I was impressed, I think it's needed. I've heard parents say, well, they don't want their children, that these values need to be taught in the home. My last year in the school district was 2015, I was at Silverbrook Intermediate School at that time, and the very same things that my daughter was experiencing was going on in the school district. And as parents have said tonight, recent episodes at the school, at the high school when school started, these are all going on. So clearly, parents are not teaching these values at home, and a program like SEL is what the school district needs. Now, the school district has allowed for parents to opt out of the program. It's pretty simple, opt out. As a taxpayer, you may not want to pay for it, but personally, I'm offended that we have one certified librarian in this school district for 5,000 students' academic needs and we have two athletic directors. There's something wrong in the school district. Keep the program, and the parents who don't like it, opt out.
Thank you. All right, we welcome Carol Hager to the podium, and on deck is Mary Riley Kliss. And Carol, it says that you are a taxpayer, so I'm thinking that means you're a resident of the district, is that correct?
Yes, and I'm a former parent and a former educator as well.
Great, thank you very much, please proceed.
My name is Carol Hager. Recently, our school district has been pressured by local parents and taxpayers like myself to reevaluate the use of a social-emotional learning curriculum called Second Step. This curriculum has been used in the elementary schools for several years, as far as we can tell. This fall, the introduction of Second Step to Badger Middle School was heralded in a message to parents. Also called SEL, social-emotional learning has been sweeping the country. When Governor Evers was actually superintendent of the Department of Public Instruction, there were grants given out from the Wisconsin Department of Justice's Office of School Safety. They were given to districts across the state to tighten their physical security but also to purchase mental health training for teachers. In fact, our district received $257,000, which was noted earlier. A good portion of this, $190,000, funded training for teachers in many areas of mental health, adolescent mental health, creating a trauma-sensitive school, meeting the social and emotional needs of all learners. Trauma-sensitive schools called Train the Trainer, Safe and Secure, which was a Rogers Behavioral Health Workshop. The Trauma-Informed School was another one, and school supplies were also provided in this grant. And these courses were separate from the funding of Second Step. The West Bend School District paid another $45,000 for the Second Step curriculum for our schools, for the teacher training portion, and for our data collection system which tests and follows the progress of students. We don't know the amount spent by the grant on Purpose Prep, which is a high school social-emotional program which has not been used yet. We talked about how at the last school boarding, Second Step was put on pause, and teachers were not to present any Second Step lessons until the school board resolved the issue. A curriculum committee was held last week, and the concerns about the 7th and 8th grade lessons were discussed by board members and the superintendent. Many changes were suggested, but I'm, in general, I'm concerned if the administration and the board understand the true dangers and intent of SEL. It is a framework meant to encourage critical social consciousness in children so they can recognize community trauma, social injustice, inequity, and oppression. Children are expected to use their social and emotional learning to become social change agents and to serve their communities and share what they learn outside of the classroom through activities like protests. Attitudes, beliefs, and identities are emphasized in SEL. Students are encouraged to think of themselves as part of larger groups such as racial, gender, and sexual groups. The family unit is targeted as well. I ask that our school board members delete the 7th and 8th grade Second Step curriculum, and I ask everyone to attend the next school board meeting on--
Thank you for your comments. All right, we welcome Mary Riley Kliss to the podium, and Nicole Casper is on deck. Mary, it says you're a resident, is that correct?
I am.
Great, please proceed.
Having read through the Second Step Community Feedback Review document, which detailed district residents' thoughts on SEL, and having also watched public commentary from previous board meetings, one thing is abundantly clear to me, and that is that no matter our views on SEL, we all care about our children's education. It appears that the SEL curriculum provides students with lessons in social and emotional learning, which in today's world are sometimes more important than academic learning. Knowledge of such skills and proficiency in their use helps students to more effectively get along with others in school, the workplace, and personal situations. We continually hear of incidents whereby emotional responses escalate into violent acts, acts which could perhaps be prevented if people were provided with coping strategies when young. Sadly, not all family units are equipped or able to teach such lessons in the home. Moreover, sometimes kids are more comfortable and open to discussing issues with someone who is not a family member. We all want the best for our children, and one of the best things that we can provide for them is a well-rounded educational experience, which includes both academic and personal relationship competencies. I'm asking this board to provide that well-rounded education by voting yes on the social-emotional learning curriculum. Lastly, it is my understanding that parents have the choice to opt their children out of sections of the curriculum with which they do not agree. I would encourage parents who are not comfortable with those lessons to do just that, rather than imposing their belief systems on others. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we welcome Nicole Casper to the podium, and Stacy Beltman is on deck. Nicole, it says you are a mother of two, so I'm assuming that means you are a parent of students in the district, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, thank you, please proceed.
Okay, first I want to preface what I'm going to say with, we don't disagree that there are issues that need to be addressed, but our problem is with the solution, and our fight is not with teachers, it is with the curriculum. I want to talk about SEL, the social-emotional part of the program, the selling points of the program that is conveniently by design. It has been suggested that the goal is to have SEL woven into the daily life of school. This alone should be concerning. Once it is linked to each and every part of how an organization functions, it is harder to remove it or its inherent, and we have officially opened Pandora's Box. Now, let's follow the science. Research has been, not been in favor of SEL, citing that there is no consensus on any of its materials. The research used in favor is very poor quality. The Pioneer Institute actually concluded it actually has negative outcomes, which means it increases depression, it increases anxiety, and increases suicide rates, which is what we're seeing here in West Bend. Our suicide rates are up by 60%, that's crazy. We have high suicidal ideation, high suicide attempts, and self-harm. Why do we need an expensive gimmick with political, social motives to teach kindness, respect, and emotional well-being? Personally, my daughter has been suffering from depression, she has been impacted negatively by the school system. So this is very real and personal to me, and I understand the seriousness of it. She's been going to guidance counselors multiple times, and not once was it brought to our attention until she started bringing it to our attention. This trained individual never once had our daughter's social, emotional well-being in mind. We got her the help, and we removed her from the district as she's no longer-- We got her the help, and we removed her from the district as she's no longer going to school here. There is one thing I will not compromise on, and that's my children's safety and well-being. I am a nurse, and I have a degree in psychology. Even with my degrees and certifications, I am limited to what I can and cannot practice. And these teachers and staff members are not trained in this field. They're not trained for this, especially with our kids who are in the most vulnerable times in their lives. Don't forget, we have entrusted you with the one thing that we will lay down our lives for, and that is our children. We will not allow them to be harmed. We will not back down. We will not compromise. We will fight until we know our children are safe in the school system, or we will remove them from harm's way.
Thank you. We welcome Stacy Beltman to the podium. And on deck is Melissa Novales. And Stacy, it says you are a teacher and a parent. Is that correct?
Correct.
Please proceed.
Hello. My name is Stacy Beltman. My address has been provided. I am speaking as a member of the WBA Executive Board. I also teach first grade at Fair Park Elementary. I attended the SEL Community Feedback Session on September 18th and attended a private appointment at the Education Service Center to review the materials further. I viewed the SEL Curriculum Meeting recording from October 5th at my home, along with the feedback documents provided on board docs. Since there are no elementary concerns, I am hopeful that the board would swiftly reinstate Second Step for the grades pre-K through 6. I am also hopeful that our school counselors can resume their counselor connect lessons. During the pause, students have missed whole group lessons around listening skills, following directions, maintaining focus, and positive self-talk. In order to be a reader, writer, speller, and mathematician, students need these skills as well. At the middle school level, students have missed lessons around overcoming challenges, identifying types of harassment and bullying, reframing negative thoughts, identifying one's strengths and interests, and being inclusive. For those not wanting for their child to participate in these lessons, the choice to opt out has always been available. Having choice is important, but since SEL has been paused, all district families have been denied a choice. Families interested in having their child experience a program that has positively impacted students and our school community have had that choice removed. Please restore choice to all families in the district by approving the return of social-emotional learning. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome Melissa Novales to the podium. And Sean Becker is on deck. And Melissa, it says you are a resident of the district and a parent. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great. Thanks. Please proceed.
My name is Melissa Novales, and I live here in West Bend, Wisconsin. I have lived my whole life here, attended West Bend School District preschool through graduation, and currently have three children in various grades at the West Bend School District. I am here tonight to stress my belief in and support of the current social-emotional learning curriculum, and stress the need to promptly reinstate lessons in the classrooms. In only three minutes, it is truly impossible to share everything I would wish to communicate, so I will focus specifically on some of the trigger or hot-button words that I have repeatedly heard from the September 13th meeting and continue to hear as counterpoints to SEL: equity, inclusion, and diversity. Here's a point of agreement: I do believe that SEL teaches these ideals. I call them ideals. Yep, I do. Because they are concepts that we should be striving for in our community. We should be a community that embraces and engages in important conversations with people from different family structures, physical and mental abilities, races, ethnicities, religions, and genders, to make a community that serves and is as relevant as possible to all groups. The definition of equity is not making things equal, the theory of taking from the rich and giving to the poor. It is seeing a disparity, which is defined as notable and significant difference or unfairness, and providing the necessary tools and adjustments to ensure that every person can achieve success. A clear example of equity at work is providing handicap accessibility, such as parking spaces, ramps, and automatic door openers. Again, equity is making accommodations or providing a set of tools for people to achieve the same successes. This is what I want for my children. I want them to be good stewards of their community, to see the needs and act through empathy, to use social and emotional learning skills to better their community, to give grace and understanding to the child who needs a fidget toy in class, or initiate a fundraiser for a family in their school who lost their house in a fire, or to recognize that their African-American classmate's great-great-grandparent was murdered in slavery, and that fact still hurts them and has real implications today. I'm proud that the WBSD allows for teachers to have continuing education and learning opportunities to grow and learn and adapt to the ever-changing, and might I add, ever-demanding needs of our community. As I close, I want to express my gratitude for the truly amazing and inspirational teachers, aides, administration, and faculty staff, who in this past year have given more to my own children than they have given to their own families. Thank you to each of you board members for your endurance of public scrutiny. I empathize with the frustration and dissonance that you must feel attempting to represent each part of this community.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. All right. All right. We welcome Sean Becker to the podium. And Marcia Temez. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. We'll find out in a moment. But Sean, you've listed employee and parent as your relationship to the district. Can you confirm that?
Yes, I am.
Great. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Sean Becker. As mentioned, I'm a resident of West Bend, an employee of Badger Middle School, and a parent of two 8th grade children in the district. I'm currently in my 17th year as a counselor at Badger Middle School, and have seen a lot of change over those years. More recently, I have seen a dramatic increase in specific social-emotional skill deficits. As counselors, we identify reasons why students visit us. Examples of these visits include schedule changes, academic support, group meetings, and attendance concerns. Over the past five years, our two biggest categories have been for conflict resolution and personal social issues. Each year, the number of students who are not able to successfully resolve their conflicts, regulate their emotions, make responsible decisions, or develop healthy relationships continues to grow. As the number of students who struggle with these skills grows, our office referrals, physical fights, and suspensions increase as well. Interestingly, these skills are the foundation of the five social-emotional core competencies that are included in the Second Step curriculum. I do not understand how teaching our students the skills to help them recognize and change their unhealthy emotions, empathize with and accept others, develop and maintain healthy relationships, or make responsible decisions has become controversial. I have looked very closely at the Second Step lessons over the past three years. There is nothing in them that I feel would be harmful to our students. In fact, the information in them would be a great benefit for our students, because it directly addresses the social-emotional skill deficits that they are experiencing. My job is to support, protect, and help every student feel safe and accepted at our school, not just some students, but all students, and right now, I cannot do that. Last week, I had a conversation with a mother whose daughter is being referred to by racial slurs. I had to tell her that even though I was sorry, there was nothing that I can do about that right now, and that broke my heart. What if that was a conversation I had with you about one of your children? Our students desperately need our help now. The longer we put it off, the more damage will be done to the emotional well-being of our staff and our students. I implore you to allow us to provide the Second Step lessons to our students, so that we can give them the skills they need to be safe, ready, respectful, and responsible students in our schools and citizens in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome Marcia Temez to the podium. How did I do with your name?
Good.
Excellent. Wonderful. And on deck is Jessica Frederick. And Marcia, it says you're a resident, parent, and employee of the district. Is that correct? Great. Please proceed.
So there's a book called Everything I Need in Life I Learned from Mr. Rogers. I think we can all agree that the lessons that Mr. Rogers taught us made this world a better place. Those lessons are the same things that SEL teaches in our schools. As a family-school liaison, I cannot stress enough how essential SEL teachings are to our everyday lives, with kindness, empathy, self-care, and respect. Much of my job is helping students who are not being successful in the classroom because of a lacking skill, usually a social or emotional one. My concern is in that taking away or modifying our SEL curriculum, we stand to see an influx of these students, students rich with potential but lacking the skills to achieve it. Imagine the downstream effects this will have on our staff, and both directly and indirectly on the remaining students: burned-out and distracted teachers, taking more time to correct behaviors, and dedicating less time to simply educating. Imagine the students being left with no formal guidance to help correct their behaviors. SEL allows us to be proactive, teaching valuable life lessons to all students that they will be able to use for the rest of their lives. Opponents of SEL suggest that it is our school's job to simply educate students and nothing more. Most educators I know would like nothing more than to be able to simply educate. This, however, is not reality. The realities that all children, all ages, regardless of upbringing or home life, are in need of social and emotional learning and cannot be successful students until those needs are met. This is my fourth year in the district, and I'm blown away at the teachers and staff that I work with. My own children have had amazing teachers in this district. I have always respected them, but I had no ideas to the dedication and passions that teachers put into their jobs. I see you teachers coming in early to mentor a student, eating lunch with a student that needs one-on-one time, or staying late to advise a club. I see you patiently reteaching social skills for the fifth time today, or maybe the 20th time this week. I see you buying birthday treats for the student who can't bring them from home, or buying snacks or clothes for those who can't afford them. I see you heartbroken when you know a student's home life isn't what they deserve. This all goes beyond simply educating our students. I say all of this because I know that these last couple of years have been extremely hard on our teachers: distance learning, virtual learning, in-school learning with new mitigation strategies. They have adapted and handled all with grace. I don't want to speak for all staff, but it seems a general feeling is this attack on SEL leaves them feeling confused, burned out, defeated, and hurt, that they are so untrusted that all they want to do is what is best for their students. They are trying to meet the dynamic and various needs of all students, and now they feel they have to tiptoe in teaching basic skills like feelings, kindness, empathy, and compassion, things that Mr. Rogers taught us make the world a better place.
Thank you. We welcome Jessica Frederick to the podium. And Jodi Geenan is on deck. And Jessica, it says you are a parent of a student in the district. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great. Please proceed.
My name is Jessica Frederick. I have lived in the West Bend area for 17 years, and I'm the parent of a 2019 grad, as well as a current East senior. When I first heard the word SEL, I wasn't sure what it was. So I went looking, and what I saw was lessons that my girls have been receiving in the school district since they were in kindergarten, and lessons that I never saw a problem with on how to be a better friend, classmate, and a person. But there seems to be opposing views about SEL, and so I decided I needed to look more into what this was. I read articles about why it was opposed. I read viewpoints on those that opposed it, and I joined Save America, a Washington County Facebook page, to learn more. After my research, I came to the conclusion that SEL is good for the teachers to use to help our children become better friends, classmates, and people in the world. Looking at a few of the points that seem to be in question, a few of the lessons, one lesson in question teaches our children to look at opposing viewpoints, to gather information and to think for themselves. This is what I hope we all did before we showed up here today to talk to you. A lesson in question teaches students to look at the world around them and to stand up for what they believe is right or wrong. Again, that is what we, as parents, are doing here today on behalf of our children. Another lesson in question asks our children to learn about community organizations and to find opportunities to volunteer. I love that my children are a part of the community through volunteering, and I don't know why we would discourage that. Another lesson in question teaches inclusion. When I think inclusion, I think about the students with differing abilities who are most often not included in their community of school. But the opposing group's comment was, "How much more inclusive can school be than it is already?" I'm glad their child has never come home crying because they felt left out of something. I believe it is always good to be reminded to include others. And to clarify a few things I've heard today, financial class is required by West Bend High School students. They do have to learn to balance a checkbook. So that's already covered. I'm highly amused that it's important to teach the school to teach cooking skills and woodworking skills, but not mental health skills. That amuses me that that is important to teach at school and not at home. And as far as the pornographic website goes, the reason you're taught to X out is because it deals with domestic abuse, and every single domestic abuse website you go to tells you to do that, because it's for the safety of the person looking. In my attempt to learn more about SEL and why it is opposed, I learned my biggest lesson when I was removed and blocked from the Save America Washington County Facebook page for no other reason than I apparently was not allowed to be there. I never commented or posted in opposition of the views on the page. I was there to learn. Apparently, I am determined, in their words, "one of the ignorant woke parents." I guess if woke means I am allowed my children to form their own opinions and to volunteer for and stand up for what they believe in, then I guess I am a woke parent.
Thank you. We welcome Jodi Geenan to the podium. And Krista Murdis is on deck. And Jodi, lists a taxpayer, so I think you are a resident of the district. If you can confirm that, that would be great. Welcome.
Yep, I'm a taxpayer and a resident.
Fantastic. Please proceed.
Good evening. I'm Jodi Geenan, a taxpayer of West Bend. As a school board candidate twice, I continue to be interested in what is happening in our schools. After viewing last week's Curriculum Committee meeting, I would like to commend the seriousness with which the committee handled the community's valid concerns regarding the Second Step Social-Emotional Learning Program for 7th and 8th grades. Thanks to the hard work of parents and taxpayers auditing the program and providing feedback so the committee could discuss many positive changes to the resource in order to try to correct what could be harmful if left as is. Nevertheless, I still believe there are some unsolved issues. Number one, why is there a Castle reference in the Second Step materials if Castle has nothing to do with Second Step? If the reference is to recognize Castle's seal of approval, that should be a red flag considering what Castle represents. The administration is considering removing the Castle reference so it doesn't continue to antagonize concerned public who become aware of Castle's ill will and make the connection between Castle and Second Step. While that might avoid ruffling feathers, it would lack transparency about adopting a program that aligns with the framework of a shady organization. If we have something to hide, maybe we should use another program. Number two, with Second Step being a digital resource, I am imagining that it can be updated by the company for as many years as our school district uses it. If so, that means we need to at least annually re-review it in order to ensure that it meets our community values. This will be a lot of responsibility and very time-consuming, but important considering the nefariousness of the organizations it aligns with. Number three, regarding the 7th grade Unit 1 lessons on roadblocks and achievements and anti-family concerns, the problem is that many conclusions can be made. The unit is so open-ended that teachers can sway whatever perspective they wish to vulnerable young minds. Teachers are not robots. This is worrisome, because we also know the kinds of inappropriate trainings our staff have had in diversity, equity, and inclusion, mostly paid for by grants given with a political agenda. I'm happy to see the discussion of making the lessons more defined. Number four, regarding 8th grade Unit 1, I noted that the Curriculum Committee did not seem bothered that gender identity was used as a sample in the lessons, because there didn't seem to be any discussion in the lesson around gender identity, so there didn't seem to be intent to promote gender identity. The fact that gender identity is brought into the lesson at all can have an impact on what goes through a child's mind and can create opportunities for classroom discussion that should be left to parents' guardians, so there isn't a violation of religious or moral beliefs of some families. Let's remove gender identity. Better yet, let's replace Second Step with something much less questionable. Let's also focus a lot more on our academics and get our grades where we can be proud. Thanks for your consideration of my concerns.
Thank you. All right. We welcome Krista Murdis to the podium. And Shelley Krieger is on deck. And Krista, it says here you're a parent of children in the district. Is that correct?
I have four children, yes.
Great. Please proceed.
Okay. Good evening. I'm concerned about the use of Second Step, Castle, and CEL in the district. I reviewed only three lessons of CEL for 7th grade. I was appalled at what I found in all of them. I played the video of the lesson on harassment for the 7th graders. The video seemed decent and simple, and overall got a good harassment point across. However, I was quite upset by the time I finished the video. Why does it have to point fingers at a certain race? It spoke of one specific race being an oppressor in the video. Is one race always the oppressor in any Is one race always the oppressor in any form of harassment? What was the point of pointing out one specific race other than, I mean, that was a racist comment in itself? I wonder if I had a chance to watch more of the videos, what else I would find? Naming a certain race as an oppressor when it had nothing to do with giving the example of how someone felt harassed and how to deal with it is divisive and racist in itself. In light of what I saw in the video, when you ask, "What does SEL get replaced with if it's removed?", what I hear is, "What should we replace racism with?" Indoctrination is not always blatant. Indoctrination can be slow, insidious, and repetitive, like a weekly topic in SEL can be. I'm not saying any of you are aware of all this, but as members of the school board, I'm certainly disappointed that Castle, Second Step, and SEL got this far. It sounded like a lot of you were taken aback when we brought it up a few weeks ago, that none of you were aware some of this content was in there. And so luckily, we did the work, we pointed it out, you've got your seven sheets of paper that list all the things that need to be removed. It's my understanding that probably almost all of you agree on a lot of those things that need to be removed. So that should be a red flag right there, that all of you agree that there are some things that need to be removed. This is from an article from the Idaho Freedom Foundation that contains references from Castle, and I quote, "SEL advocates tell parents their product is a transformational tool that will spur greater academic achievement and personal fulfillment for students. However, numerous academic experts in SEL argue the evidence supporting these claims is shallow, and that SEL presents tremendous risk to students' psychological development, violates student privacy by collecting personal data without parental consent typically, and seeks to mold children into the type of human being the government deems most useful to the economy, society, and the state. As pioneer institute scholars concluded, SEL can replace parental influence with the ultimate nanny state. Instead of requiring mental health professionals to conduct children's psychological evaluations, Castle recommends," and this is, it provides a link to their site, "offering training to teachers or administrators to teach the material and evaluate whether students' personalities and character traits are developing as desired." That's interesting, end quote. Developing as desired, desired by who? The government? Who, who's, who's to determine if our personality is developing as desired? And if they're not developing according to plan, then what?
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. All right. We welcome Shelley Krieger to the podium, and Tanya Lor is on deck. And Shelley, it says you are a teacher and a parent of at least one student in the district, correct?
Yeah, I am speaking tonight as a teacher currently, a West Bend Education Association representative, and as a parent of two girls who attended the West Bend School District. I want to express my support and appreciation of the West Bend School Board, District Administration, and staff to provide social and emotional learning for our students. I've heard people claiming the Castle and Second Step lessons are anti-family. However, people need to watch the video of the curriculum meeting held on October 5th. That meeting shows that the anti-family claims are completely unfounded. After viewing the October 5th meeting, I am confident that board members Tani Schmidt and Erin Dove have our children's best interest at heart. Castle and Second Step lessons are not anti-family or Marxist and should continue to be presented in our district.
Thank you. All right. Next, we welcome Tanya Lor to the podium, and Bart Williams is on deck. And Tanya, you are a teacher and employee in the district, correct?
Yes, I am. I'm also a parent.
Thank you, please proceed.
First, I'd like to start by thanking the school board and district administration for the extraordinary number of hours they've put into making sure that all voices have been heard in the concerns of social emotional learning. The amount of time and effort you've put in is over and above what is normally expected of a school board, so thank you. My name is Tanya Lor, and I am proud to be a teacher in the West Bend School District as well as a parent of a West Bend West student. I'm also the president of the West Bend Education Association, and will be speaking tonight in that role. Teachers have been listening closely as a small number of community members have revived the antiquated practice of attacking teachers and hurling inaccurate and uninformed accusations at them. This is not only hurtful to the people who have dedicated their lives to helping, protecting, and caring for our community's children, but is also hurtful to the kids themselves who love their teachers and have developed the empathy to feel pain when others are pain, are in pain. Your hurt is, your hate is hurting our children. We hear the tired claim that the skills of social emotional learning should only be taught at home, but there's a difference between teaching it at home and teaching it at school. School is a work environment, is where children learn how to behave when they're around colleagues and supervisors, which is different from the way people act around friends and family. And if teaching kindness and empathy at home always worked, we wouldn't have white students at our high school yelling the N-word at their classmates who are black, or telling them that slavery never should have ended. And we wouldn't have white students stating loudly to groups of students of color that they are the reason we need another genocide. We also wouldn't have students yelling the F-word at teachers and calling them effing bees and worse. Our students need lessons on social emotional learning. But it doesn't take long, while reading one of our community's Facebook pages, to realize that respect and kindness for teachers as well as for students of color isn't being taught in all homes. In order to survive in our increasingly global economy, students need to learn the skills of inclusion, the meaning of harassment, and develop the ability to work with people who do not have the same background and story as they do. A lack of these skills will not only impede their ability to be employed, but will also lead to legal trouble as sexual harassment, racial discrimination, and hate crimes are against the law. We could ticket our kids to prepare them for this workforce, or we can teach them the important lifelong skills that social emotional learning affords them. It is the lessons learned at home as well as at school that allow our kids to grow up to be fully functioning adults, both in their personal lives as well as their professional ones. Our students need social emotional learning in order to achieve both. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome Bart Williams to the, to the podium, and on deck is Flo, I think it's Moran. And Bart, you've listed several ways you're related to the district, you are a resident of the district, correct?
I do.
Great. You've confirmed that, great, please proceed.
I'm a resident, taxpayer, former parent of three kids that went through the West Bend Public Schools, and a four-time public school board member, including twice in this district.
Great, please proceed.
I'm speaking against critical race indoctrination and SEL. CRI is communism, pure and simple. Instead of economic classes, it uses race and skin color. In fact, CRI takes us decades backwards. Those advocating CRI teach students to first consider the color of another's skin rather than the content of their character, as the Christian Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the father of the modern civil rights movement in the U.S., taught us. Those advocating for CRI, SEL, DSA, et cetera, it's all the same thing, are advocating for extreme radical leftist indoctrination of our students in an active, very wrongful effort to steal children's natural and rightful bond and affiliation with their parents and family and transfer it to the schools' big government. We are moving seriously backwards with SEL. SEL is not teaching our children objective truth, let's face it. If we're not teaching objective truth, let's not pretend it's education. It's something else. It's pushing indoctrination, communism, leftist political agenda, et cetera, on all of us. It is not education. SEL is a direct and deliberate violation of board policy controversial topics. Why then is this being pushed instead of rightfully being disallowed by longstanding board policy? SEL is clearly anti-family, as Ms. White and eloquently detailed. It undermines directly the role of parents as their children's primary educators from birth to age four or five, then shared with teachers from then until age 18. Teachers change year to year, but parents, the primary educators of their kids, remain the same. I'm an honorably discharged veteran, and trust me, the vast majority of my fellow veterans are against CRI and SEL because they are anti-family, undermine our constitutional republic, and push serious untruths about the proud, not perfect, history of our nation. As previously mentioned, SEL crowds out the important subjects we can all agree we send our schools, our kids to school for: reading, writing, truthful, authentic, unbiased history, math, science, fiad, art, and music. We are squeezing out such things as reading and learning about, in their entirety, wholesome classical books, logic, detecting and refuting fallacies, unbiased teaching of civics and American government, et cetera. Not all parents have the money to send their kids to private schools and pay twice. That's why we need to seriously improve West Bend schools by completely rooting out such bad things as SEL and CRI. In conclusion, I can say with complete truth that I was the, I was not the unfortunate recipient of SEL, CRI, and I have done just fine. I have been the victim of racism many times, all of them outside of school. CRI and SEL are taking us backwards many decades in race relations, and they have no place in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome, we welcome Flo Moran to the podium.
Yes, I'm a resident of West Bend School District, and my two children were educated in the West Bend School District.
Great, please proceed.
I'm supporting the SEL program simply because children have this amazing way of becoming exactly who we tell them they are. If we tell them they are strong, they become strong. If we tell them they are kind, they become kind. If we tell them they are capable, they become capable. Speak life into your kids so that they will have whatever it takes to tackle their new life, their own life one day. Thank you. I think that's from Mr. Rogers, but I'm not sure.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Jen Chamberlain, and on deck we have Elena Chamberlain. Jen, please, let's see, if you're here to come to the podium, Jen? All right, Jen, as you're walking down, you've indicated your relationship to the district, is that you're a parent of a student in the district and a resident? If you could just confirm that for me?
Yes, I am.
Great, thank you, please proceed.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I apologize for being late, I'm a bit unprepared, but I feel really called to come and speak with you tonight. I'm a district resident of 16 years, a parent of a 22, or 2020 graduate, and a current junior at West High School. I want to say that, I want to start by thanking the teachers and the administration and the school board of this district for helping me and my husband raise two kind, empathetic, and inclusive kids who understand their role as an ally to those around them. I recognize that these lessons made an impact because they had kind, empathetic, and inclusive educators who helped role model these essential skills. In my experience, this district and the SEL curriculum is incredibly pro-child and pro-family. I see this as an opportunity in the SEL curriculum for our children to talk with their peers and teachers about important mental health issues, respect for themselves, respect for others, and how they can constructively communicate with those around them. I agree wholeheartedly with the earlier speaker who talked about wanting to raise a child who embraces empathy and kindness. While my husband and I certainly make this a priority at home, and we want to teach our children how they can act on this in real life, it, I know it's the teachers that help support these lessons during the school day that really make an impact. I want to say thank you to the school board for taking this seriously, for listening to those around you. An earlier speaker mentioned that you're here to represent us, represent the residents of this district, and that includes me and my family as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And next, we welcome, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Elena, okay, perfect, all right, Chamberlain. And it says that you're a current student, a junior, and a resident of the district, and I'll just mention that you are our 28th speaker, and you're the last common card that I have. So please confirm for us that you're a resident of the district and a student, is that correct?
Yes.
Great, please proceed.
All right. My name is Elena Chamberlain, and I'm a junior at West Bend West. I would like to thank the school board members for being here tonight and allowing me to speak. I'm president of the Youth Impact Club at the high school. It's a club for mental health and wellness as well as suicide prevention, and we need to have something in our schools that will help teach that and not just a club. A club simply cannot do as much as the SEL approach. Those who oppose social emotional learning are deciding that they do not want mental health and inclusion to be prioritized in our district. As a student who has been in the district since kindergarten and is now a junior, I have not had the proper training to promote my emotional well-being. I have had to seek professionals outside of the district. Most families, some families do not have that opportunity, I am lucky to have that opportunity, but lots of families don't, to send their children to therapists outside of the district. As a public school district, our schools are the ones who have to inform the youth who we, who will become our public in a few years. If our youth and young adults are not emotionally and socially well once they leave our district, how can we expect them to be emotionally and socially well adults in our community? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you to, thank you to all the speakers that addressed the board, we benefit from the perspectives that you, that you give us, so appreciate that very much. That concludes public participation. So we'll resume our agenda, and the next item on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda, which includes minutes of three meetings, the September 13 regular board meeting, and on September 27, the budget hearing and annual meeting as well. Disbursements post to October 11, 2021, ratification of certified staff contracts and resignations, there were no retirements on the consent agenda. I would move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda, any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. We are now on to the superintendent's report, and Superintendent Wimmer.
Thank you. Couple weeks ago, we had, well, I think it was last week even, a fantastic homecoming week, whether it was the dress-up days across all schools, the Powderpuff football game, a bonfire, and different matchups between East and West all week. It was a wonderful event. It was my first parade, the weather was gorgeous. Last year, recall that we had to cancel that event, so it was wonderful to see our band in uniform marching, it was wonderful to see all of our community members lining the streets and getting excited and cheering for our students. The high school homecoming theme was "Opposites Attract," and the winning float was our West volleyball team with the princesses versus villains. You might recall seeing that, they dressed as princesses and the different villains they faced in the story. So it was a great week, it's certainly something that trickles into our elementaries and creates a stir of excitement for all, and again, culminating with the football game and dance that Saturday. An event as part of homecoming week is the induction of our Athletic Hall of Fame members. So I'd like to highlight the few that were inducted into the Hall of Fame this year. Jason Widmeyer, East class of 1997, for football, basketball, baseball, track, he was drafted into the MLB in 2001. Jim Socksey, coach for West Bend East and West Swimming, a 47-year coaching career, and he's still going strong. He's our coach for our East-West boys team, you've seen him here speak and introduce students as they go on to state, so. Also, a different recognition, it's not just athletes or coaches that are inducted into all our Hall of Fame. Kyle Butters, our head athletic trainer for West Bend East and West, has been with us for 22 years, a very trusted part of our athletic program, and has created wonderful service to our athletes. Bill Albrecht, West class of 1983, student athlete, coach, and currently still a teacher at West. He holds six school records, still unbroken in basketball. He's a legendary baseball coach with a 451-win, 113-loss record. So amazing, it's not his first Hall of Fame appearance, and I'm sure it won't be his last. Boyjanto, West class of 1986, track, cross-country, he ran at UW-Whitewater, and then coached boys and girls' West cross-country programs and co-founded the Spartan Running Club. So congratulations to our inductees this year. A thank you to our student athletes who are representing our schools, East senior Haley Matner, and West freshman Addison Landy of the Co-op Girls Golf Team advanced to the WIA Sectionals. They did well, they didn't move on to state, but again, thank you to those ladies for representing our schools. Also, thank you to Ashley Wick, Lola Chemer, they advanced to WIA Sectionals in tennis. In the coming weeks, in this very auditorium, we're going to be holding our fall concerts, so we're excited about that. October 25th, 7:00 PM is choir, 27th is orchestra, November 10th is band. All are welcome to attend in the Silver Lining Arts Center, so make sure you're checking out the high school. out the high school calendars, websites for those events, um, to see what's going on in our schools, and please feel free to attend. We're all looking forward to Shrek the Musical, which will occur in February. Recently, our, uh, students, high school seniors specifically, had Senior Day. That's an event that gives our seniors a chance to get assistance with career exploration. They get support to complete their college applications. They learn about financial aid, scholarships, different military options, how to submit transcripts electronically, and just general support with writing necessary college admissions, essays, various statements. So, just a thank you to professionals from not only our high school staff, but also our community who came to support our seniors. So, COVID-19, people might be wondering how that's going. For most part, our schools are remaining in the first phase of operations, so our mitigation is broken into four phases. As of today, we have six classrooms or programs within the district that are on a different phase, uh, due to quarantine or illness rates. So, we incorporate both. Again, we're looking for the health of our students and staff, uh, whether it's COVID-related or not. As of Friday, there were 39 total cases for the almost 6,000 students we serve, with just 12 at the high school. Um, again, we're getting a sense from, uh, regional districts, as well as staff from Children's Health, that illness has arrived somewhat early. We would see it, uh, around mid-October, but they were seeing respiratory illness, general illness, um, arriving a little bit earlier, as I said before. As long as it doesn't stay late, I'm okay with it arriving early. Um, so we monitor, uh, and, and move very swiftly. Uh, we meet every week with our public health officials. They don't recommend any changes in our metrics at this point. Again, we're seeing kind of a swell of illness and, and mitigating quickly. Recently, the WIAA Board of Control voted to once again require the use of a symptoms checklist for our high school athletes. That was communicated by our athletic directors. It was changed in our, um, mitigation plan, so families were aware of that change as well. So, that's the only significant change to mitigation efforts recently. Just to note that, uh, National School Lunch Week is October 11th through 15th, so thank you to Abby Padilla. She's our great, uh, school nutrition staff leader. Uh, it's a tough job at the best of times, uh, and now we're seeing shortages, uh, in supplies, something that you've read about probably in, uh, news. But, a-again, thank you to all of our staff who are doing their best to maintain our program. So, while we're facing supply chain issues, um, we know that that's created local issues as well as national ones. Our department, um, is now using maybe supplementary products, other things. We're making people aware of any last-minute menu changes or product substitutions. We are still able to do that in attention to any dietary need that our students may have. But again, it might be, uh, short notice or turnaround on some substitutions as we work through supply chain issues along with others. A couple other recognitions since our last formal board meeting, which was, uh, mid-September. October 2nd was National Custodian Day. Our custodians, uh, worked tirelessly to keep our schools safe and clean. Uh, it certainly wouldn't be possible, especially in these times, without that team of custodians, so thank you. October 4th through 8 was Wisconsin School Board Week, so we recognized our seven dedicated school board members who give their time so generously, uh, to our students, our staff, and our community. October 6 was National Coach Appreciation Day, so certainly a tough job. We're proud of the many people who, uh, spend their time and talent with our students in a coaching capacity. And that is all for my updates.
Great, thank you. Board members, any questions for our superintendent at this time? All right. Hearing done, we'll move on to the next report, which is our Curriculum Committee Report, and Erin Dove will give that report. Erin?
All right, well, I'm going to keep it short because the only item on our Curriculum Committee Agenda was the social-emotional learning, which we're going to have a discussion on, um, in a little while. Uh, the Curriculum Committee met on Tuesday, October 5th. Uh, we provided a thorough review of the community feedback related to social-emotional learning, and as I said, this item appears for board discussion later on in the agenda.
Great, any questions for Erin? All right, thank you, Erin. All right, we have two action items on our agenda. Uh, the first is 2021 Health Insurance Employee premiums, and Mr. Lenny Hansen is going to walk us through that. Mr. Hansen, good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having me, uh, join you this evening. I'm here as a follow-up to our discussion that we had on September 13th, it was, uh, when I brought forth before you a report on our health insurance plan's performance during the 2020, uh, calendar year. Uh, along with that came a recommendation around what to set premiums at for the 2022 year. Uh, our health insurance plan operates on a calendar year, so those will go into effect on January 1st. As you may recall, I had a number of, uh, good news pieces to share at that meeting. Uh, one of them was that our change, uh, in pharmacy carriers to OptumRx had saved, uh, the district and its employees $600,000 in one year. So, we were really happy about, uh, the, the performance and, and return on investment we got on that, uh, challenging decision. Uh, we were also excited to share that the data we had received on the usage of our West Bend School District Employee Clinic was outstanding. Uh, in fact, the, uh, in the cost of deferred urgent care and emergency care visits, we found that the clinic actually more than paid for itself. So, we were really excited about that and had a lot of positives to share. As we look forward to the new year, the recommendation we brought forth was for a roughly 5.6% increase in employee premiums. This is below the 6% to 8% market, uh, market norm that's being seen throughout the region, uh, and we are bringing that forth in order to, uh, just account for the expected increase in healthcare costs this year, um, as well as, uh, to ensure that we can maintain that 90-10 employer-employee cost share that has, uh, been a long-term goal, um, of the district. So, tonight, uh, I'm not going to summarize any more than that, uh, bringing forth the discussion, the discussion and content from the last meeting, uh, for approval of those premiums, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hansen?
I'll move to approve the 20... 22, 2022 Health Insurance premiums as proposed.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second to, uh, approve the 2022 Health Insurance premiums as proposed. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. Right, and our next agenda item is the 2021 Dental Insurance Employee premiums.
At that September 13th meeting, I also summarized the performance of our dental plan during 2020. It was a very strong performance as well, which brings me today to, uh, bring forth a recommendation that for the fifth consecutive year, we actually, uh, bring forth a recommendation to keep employee dental premiums flat, uh, and have no change for the 2022 school year. So, good performance by both plans, and the dental plan especially, uh, even amidst COVID, uh, continued to perform well, and even though we're probably expecting a bounce-back of usage this year, we're still expecting to have really good performance, and that is therefore why we bring forth, uh, the recommendation that we do.
I move to approve the 2022 Dental Plan premiums as proposed.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the 2022 Dental Insurance premiums as proposed. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're on to discussion items, and the first discussion item on our agenda is the Social-Emotional Learning Curriculum Review, and Superintendent Wimmer will walk us through that, and we welcome you to the podium.
Could I make a request first?
Yes.
Mr. Sarno? There's a group of people in the hallway, and we need to keep the door open because this is an open meeting, and the people out there can congregate freely, obviously. But could you maybe ask that they move down a little bit, so it's not distracting? Or welcome them back in? Um, we're going to talk about the stuff that's probably interesting to them now. Thank you.
Thank you, Toni. All right, Superintendent Wimmer, welcome.
Good evening. Tonight, I am going to facilitate the discussion around social and emotional learning, um, certainly a hot topic in our community and for us as a board and a staff, so I appreciate the time. Just a, a few kind of preamble, uh, thoughts and discussion points. They're probably a repeat from our Curriculum Committee, maybe some past presentations, but we just wanted to reiterate some information, our, our commitment as well. So, um, one of the pieces that we serve, we, we hear a lot about the academic side of students, and we're certainly in attention to that, um, and look forward to kind of the next iteration of our Continuous Improvement Plan. We want all our students to be highly successful, but there is a piece in serving the whole child, uh, that is in attention to social and emotional side of learning, as well as their personal behavior, their behavior with peers, and behaviors in a classroom that would preserve a learning environment. Uh, we also, kind of right on the cusp of my arrival, we were navigating a return to school, those pieces, that was something that the board did reaffirm, was that commitment to whole child, especially the mental health, as we sought to, uh, welcome back students after being gone for several months at the end of the year. Uh, and this year also marks, um, an additional 800 students returning to school after a two-year absence. Maybe they participated in virtual learning last year. So, again, the intent i- is around making sure there's clear expectations, there's learning. Again, um, our intent is to, to have those skills within that school environment, um, only looking to, to support the role of family and home, um, in that work. So, again, I, in, in our service to students, many staff, no matter what role, I want to be really clear, while we talk about the instruction that occurs at, at the whole-class level, students could be praised for their behavior by any staff member at any time. They might be corrected in their behavior at any time. Um, and, and that's not necessarily a whole group lesson, but that, i- it's either gentle coaching or reminder around what the school expectations are. So, I don't want to set a stage in which our staff feel that they can't correct behavior, they can't support students' behavior. We're solidly talking around, um, you know, our, our lessons that are delivered at the whole, whole, uh, classroom. We also employ counselors, school psychologists, family liaisons, that have specific training and roles that would go a little deeper. The lessons that we talk about as being delivered in a classroom are cultivated lessons, they're, they're brief, they're mini lessons. The other, um, whether it's a small group, in-depth lessons, those are delivered by those professionals in those roles. And again, the commitment that we've made as a district is to have those full-time staff in each one of our schools, um, again, through counselors, psychologists, family liaisons, to do additional support. Couple things that come up, we talk about CASL. So, CASL is a clearinghouse that's, um, they, again, set a framework for some standards or some lessons. That's different than social-emotional learning. Social-emotional learning is, uh, kind of a term that people wield widely, uh, around anything that doesn't fall into reading, writing, math, kind of, kind of those fundamental eth, um, academic subjects. So, CASL then, as, as part of social-emotional learning, CASL, um, has that framework, some of tho- those standards, that, that piece. Uh, and again, early, that feedback from, uh, community members was that there was significant concern around CASL as an organization, that when you dig a little bit deeper, that organization may not be aligned to our beliefs as a community, um, our, our intent as a district. None of our materials come from CASL. And, and we did have that conversation early on. Did we want to have that reference on our website, off our website? Uh, and we talked at the last Curriculum Committee around removing that reference because we don't have materials from CASL specifically. Uh, they're used as a clearinghouse, um, for that. So, there's other graphics. We talked about, uh, we have here the West Bend Way, um, and talked about kind of creating our own, uh, graphic and organizer to what our own skills are. So, that was a piece that was a takeaway from our committee and, and work that, uh, we'll be doing. The other piece is Second Step as a curricular resource, so it's a primary resource, uh, that's used to, um, provide lesson materials for our staff. Now, there's some question about copyright or what we can and can't do, and it's a little bit different than a library book, um, or a textbook that would be available, um, because it's software-based. And, and we've run into issues that have been highlighted by our community and, and by ourselves. Uh, when we want to make things accessible to our families, what we have done is taken that directly to Second Step and worked with them, again, to ensure that in our agreement or our license that we're working within our copyright, that we're making things accessible. We're very sensitive to, one, the amount of material that's out there, the amount of time for people to be able to, um, look at those materials. So, those are, are open in our, um, our main office during our regular business hours, which are 7:30 till 4:00, and by appointment to accommodate after-hours. We know that those hours don't match everyone's schedule, so just reach out, um, because it are, it is our intent to have things accessible. Yes?
Uh, thank you for, uh, pointing out that the materials are accessible, um, all day, every day, including after-hours. Um, just today, someone asked me if it's possible to, for a resident to purchase, um, a set of the Second Step, um, materials themselves. Is that something we could arrange?
I can ask that question for Second Step. They've been, um, very responsive to work with. Things that we've mentioned before and have brought to them around certain website references, they've since removed from all of their, their software packaging, uh, all of those references. Um, we've also talked with them about our, our want and desire to make things accessible. They're actually exploring in their model, um, that districts could have a set number of licenses that they could kind of check out, so that people could access that material in their home, uh, as well. So, we kind of, uh, keep pushing on that so that we can make that accessible, but I'll ask that very question of them as well, and make sure that we respond.
Especially since that's a work in progress, and we don't know when the date would be when that is available, so.
Absolutely. Um, another piece that we talked about in processes, making sure that we're in attention to community input, and you saw in our Curriculum Committee, we synthesized, you know, thank you to the many who came in and, and did that work to really highlight, uh, where their concerns were. The specificity really helped, um, so you can see that list and those concerns narrated. We went through them point by point at our Curriculum Committee meeting. I know our board members who weren't part of that committee, uh, watched that video, reviewed those documents in preparation for a conversation, so we don't need to do that today. But I wanted to highlight, um, the process, uh, the timeline, and then some key points from that. So, part of our process, uh, in committee, again, that's a fishbowl. You can kind of watch our work, but it doesn't have or garner the public input that a board setting does. So, again, we wanted to treat this, um, differently. We wanted to treat it as a full curriculum, where anything has to be fully, uh, vetted by committee, then approved through the board. So, that process is, um, going to include the potential for K-6. Discussion is tonight, but action is early as October 25th. Again, there, the significant amount of feedback centered around 7th and 8th grade, and, uh, our commitment to work through that process with the committee. But looking at 6th grade, the one change that, uh, we would recommend in that, before bringing that forward, um, just being sensitive to some of the ending unit lessons, talk about kind of seeing an issue beyond yourself. You're advocating for something, you're trying to stand up for something, doing that, and that being viewed as protest in some way. So, we talked about removing those lessons from 7th and 8th grade. There is a lesson in 6th grade that could be considered that. We would recommend that removal, just to stay aligned to that piece. But again, um, I would just urge anyone, if they have a, any feedback on those other grade levels, we would be comfortable with making a recommendation to move forward as early as October 25th for the board to take action on just the K, uh, through 6th grade curriculum, uh, again, with that one removal that I've noted. And the next parts of the process are to dig a little deeper. Again, that Curriculum Committee went point by point, and we listed lessons that immediately were easy for us to identify for removal. We identified lessons that we need to create to support family as a primary source of information, or support, again, a lot of the lessons talked about a trusted adult, but they don't call out a family member as that. So, we talked about some lessons we could create to support that and reinforcement throughout. We also talked about, uh, the concept of technology and when, uh, that is or isn't appropriate. So, again, it's not our intent to undermine a family's views on technology or how they have their students use, but some of the lessons look at, uh, you know, frame this as if it were a text message, or pretend you're writing a website, or write a website, that kind of thing. So, we would want to have a lesson that reasserts, um, you know, in the context of school, that there's always choice, that there's not only a, a social media or technology option, uh, and that it reinforces the, the family's, uh, wishes regarding that. So, those were some areas where we would want to do lesson creation. And then there's, uh, just deeper feedback to look through, uh, those lessons with another lens, uh, a different perspective. So, again, the feedback being brought forward may differ. Someone might look at a set of material. Someone might look at a set of materials and think, oh yep, that's okay, and I want that, and some are having questions, and those are all okay perspectives to have. We want to honor that and move through that. So there's a larger list of lessons for review, for each grade level, to review that lens, take that back through the curriculum committee. So again, given that amount in 7th and 8th grade, the amount of work, the due diligence that we want to do, and framing a process that people can, you know, participate in, we want to recommend that that would go back to committee. We would share that with our 7th and 8th grade staff, go through those pieces, be in attention with, again, that professional staff we talked about, as well as the teachers, to look at things more critically, perhaps through a different lens, reframe, revise, or make another slate of recommendations based on that feedback. And that review would be November 2nd at the curriculum committee level, and that committee then would determine which lessons, if any, are ready to go forward out of 7th and 8th grade. And again, we don't have to feel like everything needs to be done, delivered for that whole year, so we can certainly take it slow, so that we can dig in at that level, and say, okay, this is one unit, and we've got this one kind of written and complete. Again, that process would be November 2nd for the curriculum committee, and much like we're doing here, we would slate, if anything came out of committee at that time, the recommendation would be a November 8th board meeting for discussion, and again, opportunity for input and no action even being considered on 7th and 8th grade till the 22nd board meeting. So again, that's taking those pieces back to curriculum, a process in attention to feedback, as well as some review, potential revision. So again, in those documents, you'll see those lists, again, just some really great specific feedback, that's always really helpful. So you can see which ones were recommended for removal in those different lists, you can see which ones are recommended for more close review, which ones need to be added, and then there were some that had no recommendation for change coming from that conversation. So that would be kind of our next iteration of working through that process. I guess I would encourage anyone, if you don't see your specific feedback, if you still have question about something, to continue to reach out, so that we're aware of that in the interim before, so that we can incorporate that into the work. So feel free to send that to me, or either Erin Dove, Tony Schmidt, or the three of us as representatives of that curriculum committee, so that we can be in attention to including that. So that takes us through kind of the process. The curriculum committee was very interested in just making sure that all board was fully aware, that we continued to provide opportunities through a board meeting for public input around the subject. That kind of lays out our path for the future potential process. Are there any questions or discussion from the board, so that we can help kind of inform process or direction for the curriculum committee?
I guess the piece of feedback that I would offer, after watching the video from last Tuesday's meeting, is thank you for taking the time to be diligent to walk through this, almost crawl through it, as opposed to, you know, a passing reference and moving on. This is big stuff, it's obviously important to the community, and, you know, I've taken time to dig through some of the lessons, but appreciate what the committee's done, especially on Tuesday, and the support staff as well. Thank you.
Superintendent, the risk of kind of going backwards, can we just talk a bit about the overall process as to how we got the feedback to the curriculum committee? So I just, what I'm looking at is just making sure that we have opportunities for public input, and it began in the past, and we want to take that forward. So can you just reiterate where we were, and the documents, the deliverables?
Sure. So some of the pieces, again, kind of started almost prior to the school year, some community groups that were connected to larger community groups, kind of sounding some concerns, being able to sit down, meet, understand those, sift through items, and then there's new formation of new community groups, so that's really helping probably solidify and get the message out. What we did was, so that it wasn't just in attention to small groups, we wanted to be really transparent, we made sure to include it in our newsletters to our entire school community. Those are also posted on our website, so if you don't have students in our schools, you can see those under the news item, and you can see us giving updates to everyone and soliciting feedback. Again, making sure that they're aware of the opportunity to view materials, to see those. We posted preliminary information, what we could, on the website to give a highlight of lessons, an overview, maybe help people identify areas that they might target or have concern about, or question about, so that would help them spend their time. Again, there's a lot to go through, so it might help focus their work. So again, we've got those materials on display and made those accessible. We added a Saturday, just being in attention to, again, work schedules, school schedules, student schedules, just schedules of life don't always fit in that 7:30 to 4:00 p.m. box. And we've also made ourselves accessible, we work late, we arrive early, and when we can accommodate someone's schedule, we make time to do so. And again, you'll hear in these pieces, if people are watching our board meetings, whether they're watching them live, or they're seeing them on tape, just a call for feedback, making sure that we've left no stone unturned, that people, again, are aware of what the process is, the timeline, and have connections to reach out, whether that's the administrators, the board members, et cetera, helping funnel them to a right channel of communication. We've all received a lot of communication, just a continuum of feedback, and we make sure and share those sentiments, they're emailing, again, full board or individuals, just to make sure that we're all aware of feedback. What I do generally is thank people for feedback, and then I ask if there's any specifics around lessons, I might share the lesson list, are there any specifics we should be in attention to as we review? Just, again, to make sure we're trying to capture that specific feedback for people. So I appreciate, I appreciated that one group kind of culminating their information that could be representative of the whole group and individual with the group, but again, kind of putting that together in a manner that we could move forward and really seek to understand.
Other questions or observations?
October 25th is two weeks away. How do our teachers know in the meantime what they can and cannot do in the classroom as it relates to kids? Kindness, empathy, respect, self-skills? Is it okay for a teacher to walk into class tomorrow and say, "Teagan, get your head up, you got this"? Is it okay for a teacher to walk into class tomorrow and say, "How do you feel about Mason Crosby missing so many dang field goals last night"? I mean...
We might do a statistics lesson on that, and see how that works.
But I think our teachers, since our last board meeting, especially in kindergarten through 6th grade, don't know even what they can and can't do or say around their students anymore.
I agree, there's confusion and an element of fear, like, am I doing the wrong thing? So what we did immediately after that board meeting that evening, and kind of read before you start your lessons today, was advise them of the board's wishes, and really hone in on full-class lessons around that, specifically SEL, using any Second Step materials, that piece. Now, we fielded, and we've met with our principals, I think immediately that next day, to really talk about that, because there have been questions. Kindergarters, I read a book on kindness, and what do I do? And it's like, that's still okay, and you can still do those things. Well, we do this activity. So sometimes we're fielding those questions individually for staff, because they're just afraid. We always just talk about, you know, err on the side of communication, you know, communicate with your principal, ask a question, or make sure you're just clearly communicating. Generally, our staff do a weekly newsletter, and just let people know what we're learning about, or the context, so that we're ensuring that they understand, that we're not trying to sneak something in on people, and that families can seek to understand, ask questions before something happens, or opt out in anything. We want that choice for our families, and whether it's any topic, really. But again, I'd be remiss if I didn't say there's still questions and confusion, and, like I said, am I doing the right thing? Am I not doing the right thing? So we try and make ourselves accessible to help navigate those and make sure we're communicating with our families.
Tonight, DESA was brought up again. Could you speak to how that's no longer being used?
Sure. So DESA is an assessment system, there is an online portal for software. We talked a lot about student data, different agreements that we have around that. But DESA was used in a couple of classrooms as a pilot to see if we wanted to move forward with that, and we are not moving forward with that. We don't administer a universal screener or data collection tool like that piece. Now, that's not to say that teachers aren't kind of almost constantly assessing the needs of their students, and we want them to be responsive. We're not doing it with a formalized test, we're not doing it in a manner that collects data. But in the future, when we're restoring whole-class lessons, they might see that their class is struggling with X, Y, or Z, or they might want to support a student whose parent has passed away. We might have to do some responsive lessons with that class, we just want to make sure they have that opportunity to do that. So we might be looking and needing something different, based on our observation or what we know about our class, but there's no formalized assessment.
There was brought up again tonight, the love is respect, and I know this was covered during the curriculum committee meeting last Tuesday, but I'm assuming that...
Sure. I always try not to, you know, in talking with community members and talking about kind of highlighting that, so I always call it the website, I don't try not to give it airplay. It was something that we didn't use, was blocked by our filters, but Second Step being very responsive to our needs, removed it actually from all of their materials, so it doesn't exist anymore in that. So that was really nice, that's, you know, just evidence of how feedback is powerful. We also are working with Second Step around, you know, how do you customize your portal of information? How could we maybe look at and customize things? That's a conversation we're still having, they're not there yet, but we're hopeful about that as well.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Other questions? So just to reiterate, the plan would be this to come up at the next curriculum committee? Can you just run through that one more time?
Let me just talk about that. Again, K through 6, we could make a recommendation to the board, given discussion today, as early as our next board meeting, which is October 25th. Again, very limited feedback around K6. If anyone has feedback, please send that to us, so that we can be in attention to that, but we would be comfortable recommending that, based on our work at committee level and here. Formalizing that review, that timeline is to work with our staff, our professionals, around the more intense review of 7th and 8th grade, bringing it to committee on November 2nd. And then the committee will determine if there's readiness for all or part of that to come out of committee, and that would come to a board for discussion prior to any action. So that may be November 8th and 22nd, but again, that's determined by committee if there's readiness there.
Any additional questions on the timeline? All right, is this an informational item, we're not taking action, but that is what the community can expect as next steps, then?
Correct, and we'll make sure, again, that that goes out to all of our staff, all of our families in our communications, and that, again, it's posted on the website publicly, so that they're aware of that.
Okay.
I'd like to point out that the feedback and recommendation that's already been given and reviewed in committee is available on board docs under public content, and you'll be able to see that there are some lessons that we have recommended for removal. I think that it's important that the public realize that.
Thanks, Tony. Any other items, or any other questions, observations?
Although I would also like to point out that there are a lot of lessons that I really appreciate and think that our community needs, so I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I'm not in favor of throwing the baby out with the bathwater. However, I also am very concerned about CRT, and I feel like what we've recommended for removal addresses that successfully.
All right. Thank you, appreciate it, Superintendent. Our next discussion item then is the employee engagement report, and Lenny Hansen will walk us through that.
All right, thank you again, members of the board, for letting me join you this evening. As I'm sure you know, the two best things that any organization can do to promote its success is to recruit and hire great employees, and then the second thing is to develop and engage them. Those two pieces alone are often make or break for any organization's success. I'm here tonight to briefly go through a number of successes we have there. We are recruiting and hiring and retaining some outstanding employees who are moving our mission forward, and we're seeing growth in our ability to develop and engage them, as well as, I'm going to share tonight, our next steps and opportunities to continue to that end. So I'm here to share results from the past year's engagement analysis with you. Why does engagement matter? I put, you know, there's a million things you could find online, I put some of the most common ones you see here. People who are engaged are enthusiastic about their organization, and they're moving the mission of the organization forward. You can Google it and read things for hours and hours, but in the end, this is about helping everyone move the mission forward. This is a common statistic here from Gallup, in terms of nationwide, the number of, the average number of engaged employees, not engaged and actively disengaged employees. You know, those engaged employees, which sadly, as a country, I'll get to our data in a little bit, but as a country, is less than a third of all employees in the country. Those are people advancing that mission forward, and then that middle group of those people, you want to nudge them forward, want to turn them into those advocates for your organization, and then those actively disengaged individuals are ones who maybe actually are slowing your ability to advance your mission. This is critically important, and we are beating the odds here and beating the numbers, and I'm excited to share that with you this evening. Why do we care about engagement? The impact is huge, the impact on dollars, the impact on absenteeism, the impact on your ability to achieve the goals, the strategic goals of your organization, and also to retain your employees. There are a million ways that it's impactful, and if you're neglecting engagement, you cannot succeed as an organization. The other thing, you know, people often ask, well, what about money? Isn't this just about, who gets paid well is engaged? And in fact, the data would show that that's definitely not true. Money plays a role in employee satisfaction, but in terms of engagement, its impact is actually quite minimal, which is a good thing for us, right? It means that we can look at this and say, there are activities we can do, communication strategies, ways of engaging our employees that we can put into place, that cost little to no money, and get us huge impact. And in our business, that impact means greater student learning, which is, I know why all of you sit on this board today. So how do we measure engagement in the West Bend School District? Well, there's several different tools that we use to do that. We have an annual engagement survey that we've deployed for three years in a row now, and we have exceptional participation. Seventy-five percent of participation on any engagement survey is off-the-charts good, so we're excited about that. That's an anonymous survey, as is the next one that we added this past year to amplify the data that we have. The WEDSR, or Wisconsin Educator Development Support and Retention Survey from UWM, is a statewide survey that allows specifically our certified staff, or teachers and so forth, to provide feedback on their thoughts on satisfaction and engagement within the district. And what's really cool about this tool that we've started using is that it gives us statewide comparable data, which is really helpful for us to understand where we measure up compared to our neighbors throughout the state, who are also in public education. We look at employee turnover, we look at some exit survey information, and then absenteeism as well. I'm not going to go into absenteeism too much tonight. COVID blew up our absenteeism report data, right? I mean, we want people staying home if they have, you know, some of these symptoms that, you know, you would think in past years, a lot of people were coming to work with, or kids were coming to school with, so our absenteeism data is kind of skewed. So I'm going to stay away from that today. But what I'm going to do is now pull in some of the strengths that I want to highlight that came out of our engagement, tools that we collected this year, and then after that, I'll swing into some of the great opportunities we have for continuing to advance this this year. So one of the big strengths that came through in our surveys was on that employee-manager relationship. I have a number of pieces of data right here that you can see, but, you know, I really, that first one always stands out for me, the supervisor's actions aligning with their words, to have over eighty percent of staff agreeing with that statement is really outstanding, and I think that's something as an organization we should be really proud about. You know, there's a lot of things you can buy and implement in a year and say, okay, we did that. You can't buy that, right? You can't buy that kind of trust. We always know that there's opportunity to continue to build trust and build more trust, but that's something that takes years and years to nurture, and we're really proud of, all these statistics on here are things that didn't just happen overnight, but we're a concerted commitment by our leaders to develop that level of trust, and then also a concerted commitment by our teachers to be trusting, and to put themselves out there and work... with our leaders to accomplish that. Staff collaboration is another huge strength that came out of our results that we're really excited about. That top part is compared to the statewide average, this is from that UWM survey, our teachers are far more likely than the average teacher in the state to work with others, to develop lessons, to analyze data, to develop new instructional strategies. That's, again, something you can't just flip a switch and make happen. That's the result of years and years of our teachers working together, and our leaders working with them, and everybody working to build that trust, and that confidence that your person in the next door to you in the classroom down the hall has some great things to share, and that we want to get out there and put ourselves out there and learn from each other. And then teacher trust is another huge strength that came through. I mean, that last stat is just, is just amazing. Ninety percent, you know, believing that it's okay to discuss your feelings, your worries, your frustrations with your colleagues. That's above the state average, and that's important, especially through this pandemic, as there's been incredible challenges and new obstacles thrown into educators' way. For them to feel that confident to have each other around them is really outstanding. Job satisfaction, we, our data produced an eighty-two percent job satisfaction rating, which is really very strong. We can always continue to grow that, however. Eighty-six percent of our staff agree they find real enjoyment in our job, and that's, you know, something we want. You know, you get an education for that, and we're really excited to know that we're delivering that for our employees. They got into this field to get that, and they're getting it here in West Bend. And then, you know, almost eighty percent of our employees agreeing that they must like their job better than the average person is a really great stat, when you think about it. So I said how we're beating that nationwide norm in terms of engagement, and I tried to highlight that here. I mean, we're not just beating it by a small margin either. I mean, where I said less than a third of employees nationwide fall into that highly engaged group, over half of ours, and that's a very high bar, this is above the norm, are in that group. And then, you know, we continue to move people from that middle area over into that, into that highly engaged area, and we're going to put in place some more strategies this year that hopefully help us to continue moving that bar upward. Our staff retention data definitely echoes that we have high levels of engagement here. In the blue here, that line represents West Bend School District retention rate, and the red is the regional average that we collect from southeast Wisconsin for the fourth consecutive year. We have a better retention rate than the regional average, which is outstanding. I put the actual data there on the right, just to show you how great it is. I mean, we're basically only losing five percent of our teaching staff compared to last year, which is really outstanding. We're really excited about that. Whereas, if you look at that regional average, you actually see that retention took a dip throughout the region from last year to this year, whereas we had an opposite trend. Lots of strengths, excited about that, but we always want to keep pushing ourselves. We want to have a continuous improvement mindset. So what are the opportunities that we have for continuing to grow that engagement? Support staff turnover. When we, this is an issue that isn't new. It's something that we want to target. We have certain groups in support staff that we really struggle with turnover, and we want to put in place some strategies to address that. As I've said many times before this board, we have almost as many support staff members as we do certified staff members. There's a lot of those individuals, and they're all really important to making an impact on moving our mission forward. Other opportunities are increasing our specificity and our feedback to employees is something our employees ask for. More frequent training opportunities for support staff, more impact from our employee goal-setting process, which is part of the DPI educator effectiveness process. So we've looked at ways to do that this year. And then a lot of our employees are calling for greater emphasis on employee wellness. That has kind of, a lot of the typical things that would happen around wellness kind of took a pause during the pandemic, and we've got to get those restarted. People are passionate about integrating that wellness into their day-to-day life, and we, as the employer, have a lot of ways we can help make that happen. So I've got a couple of pages here of some action steps. Some have already taken place. Some are in motion, and some are planned for this year. So an enhanced staff communication platform, the Superintendent Wimmer has already put in place to communicate with our staff regularly through her Monday updates, and we have, we're able to capture all the information from all of our different departments there, which is really great just for coherence and putting all that information in one spot. We've, with the help of Mr. Harder and Mrs. Kunkler, we've been able to revamp our staff internet, to put a lot more information in front of our staff in a very easy-to-access way. Again, that's a way that we're going to improve that communication with our staff. Around the goal that staff had of increasing that specificity in the feedback they get, we are having some experts from the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators work with our administrators on having really impactful coaching and high-impact feedback when they observe teachers, so that we can continue to build that relationship and build great learning and instructional strategies in our staff. And there's a number of other pieces here around goal-setting that we're implementing as well this year. We revamped our support, getting after that support staff turnover issue. We revamped our support staff onboarding process. We added an aid mentorship program, which is really a pilot that, after this year, will expand to many more, if not all, of our support staff positions, so that we can really improve that onboarding experience, and hopefully that reduces the turnover in those areas that I highlighted before. We're interested in pursuing a stay interview process to pair with our exit interview process. As I talked about at our last meeting, we'll be launching a benefits and wellness committee to increase employee feedback and input on a number of those important decisions. And then we'll be taking a look at our employee recognition strategies. You know, the last couple of years, one of our biggest things, the annual recognition program, we weren't able to have due to COVID. We're definitely bringing it back this year, and it's kind of an opportunity for us to look at all of our recognition approaches and how we can bring them back better than ever. So that's a, I tried to fly through that, give you a summary of a lot of highlights, a lot of things we can be proud of. The biggest thing that I'm proud of when I look at this is all those pieces that took years and years to build, that other districts just wished they could have. They wished they could have that kind of trust between their employees and their leaders, that trust between teachers, that level of collaboration. And we've got that, and I can't think of a better foundation to be able to build all those other important pieces on top of. So any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Are both surveys done every year?
The, so the engagement survey that's, that we do, the first one that's listed, we've done three years in a row. It's anonymous. It's done internally. The UWM one, we started doing for the first time this past year, and we'll be doing it every year. We learned a lot more about the opportunities that that survey provides, and we're really excited about annually getting that data.
Good. Thanks.
Of the continuous improvement strategies that you identified, is there, are there any one or two that we think are going to move the needle more than others, or is it kind of distributed equally throughout? Could you comment on that?
So from my own side, when I look from the data side, that support staff turnover piece is the one I, we gotta, we gotta get better there, right? Like, that's a piece that, I know we're not the only place that struggles, but that's not an excuse. We want to target, we want to be better than everyone else at that. So the onboarding and mentorship program for our aides, which we have roughly 200 aides, I think is huge. That's a lot of employees. And when we, if we can keep them for a couple of years, they stay. What we need to do is we've got to keep them through that first, you know, six months to two years. We've got to improve that, and we're hoping that this multifaceted approach to onboarding gets after that. And then I'm just really excited also about, I talked about that professional development we're bringing in for our administrators around the ability to provide high-quality feedback to our employees. Our employees in the survey show that they are not shy about saying, "We want to grow. We want to learn more." And that's what I love about our teaching staff, and we want to help our administrators be a great resource for that. They've done that for many years, and we want to continue to provide them the expertise. So we're actually bringing that training here, rather than sending people out, so that everybody can receive that. Regardless of if you're providing feedback to teachers, aides, custodians, school nutrition workers, anybody, we're all going to be receiving that, because from every level of the leadership group, we can all get better at providing impactful feedback to our staff.
Other questions? All right. Hearing none. Thank you for the report. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right. So next, on future agenda items, is our board meeting calendar. And so we got a little bit of a preview of it before, during Superintendent Wimmer's report. On October 25th, we have a regular board meeting scheduled for 5:30 p.m. And my understanding is we're going to still determine the location of that, correct? Because there's, there's an event at this venue that night.
Correct. We're holding a student concert here and want to be respectful of that, so we'll seek an alternate that gives us a little bit more size, probably, than our boardroom, to welcome visitors and feedback.
Okay. So for those paying attention, please look carefully at that meeting notice, because the location will be different. Then curriculum committee meeting on November 2, regular board meeting then, again, on November 8 and November 22. Those are both scheduled for 5:30 p.m. at the Education Service Center. So that is a list of the public, of the future board meetings and committee meetings. Any questions on the board meeting calendar? Hearing none. Are there any other additional items for future agendas for follow-up for communication, beyond what we talked about already? All right. Hearing none. We have an item, we have an item to discuss related to compensation. And so at this point, I would make a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, compensation. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second to adjourn into executive session. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
We need to do a roll call vote.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We will do a roll call vote. All right. And I've got my roll call list back here. Thank you, Mr. Anger, for that point of order. I'll call the roll. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Angert?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger votes yes. Mr. Revoltz is absent. All right, that motion carries. All right, we are adjourned into executive session. Thank you to all those who supplied comments tonight and who came to the meeting. We greatly appreciate your participation. We stand adjourned.